Copy.
Yeah, yeah, it's wherever it was. Yeah, it was it was a good time.
Did you build the phone bill back for the international?
Yeah, no, it's a game out of. You know, I put the the problem was that the wife and kids were asleep. I think I was like. Oh, we've seven hours ahead of you guys. It was like, yeah, it was like two in the morning. Yeah, but I just woke up and I'm like, I'm trying to whisper.
Park in the AP. Yeah, we will have one, but that was a good experience. It was seven. Yeah, it's.
Coming back and we came back on the day of the time.
Yes. I think he's going to do himself to us at public comment. I'm ready, Todd.
Go time.
Is it go time? All right. Good evening. I'm going to call the Senator City Council meeting order for November tenth, twenty twenty five. Everyone in attendance, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Public, which stands, well, I mentioned, under God, individual with liberty and justice and all. Please, please remain standing. Would you lead us in prayer?
Yes. Father, thank you for a city that is continuing to grow. Thank you for bringing businesses and people to our town. Lord, we just ask that you. Put a hedge of protection over all of us, especially those in leadership here, that we continue to be guided by you. Be guided by the principles that you set out for us and nothing more. We ask you to continue to protect our. Our police, our fire, our state employees. And and make sure that everything we do is in your name and in your. Your guidance. We ask all these things in Jesus's name.
Amen.
Hey, roll call, sir.
Luke Thompson.
Here.
Justice Calgar.
You're here two times in a row.
You're going a lot smoother tonight, right? Wendy Henson. Jesse Reed. Joshua Hagan.
Here.
Cody Miles.
Here.
And Mayor Bill Edwards.
I'm here also. All right, so our first order of business is approval of the city council meeting minutes from October fourth and October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. They've been in your package here for a little while and nothing's changed on them. Someone like to make a motion to adopt those minutes.
Make a motion.
We have a motion by Josh. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Wendy. All in favor? Anyone opposed? All right, next is accepting or acknowledging receipt of the water and sewer commission meeting minutes from September fourteenth. The planning commission meeting minutes from October seventh and October twenty first. And the board of zoning adjustment from October seventh. Will make make motion to acknowledge receipt of those.
Some.
Yeah, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? All right, next is the financial report. And so far, we, this is through October, we're eighty three point four percent through the year. Revenue wise, we're at ninety one percent. And expense wise, we're just getting close to eighty three. We're at eighty one percent. So. Overall, we're doing good. A couple, a couple highlights. City term, city sales tax. County sales tax coming in, just about where we budgeted. And the city sales tax is up just a hair. So. And then I've learned how to change these pages now since the last time we met. Practicing.
Good job.
Just gotta go a little faster. All right, so now then we also on the street fund. We have a hundred and five percent of the revenue and we spent ninety six percent. The good thing here is that we are over the, you know, we have more revenue and expenses, so we're good. They are doing a lot of street work, getting a lot of things. So and then also your court reports attached also. Any questions? I have here any, some like to make a motion to accept the financial. Report and the court report for October.
Some.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right, next is department reports. All department reports are in the Dropbox. I don't think they might have any questions on any of those. All right, here none. Next is public comment. This is an opportunity if anybody would like to address the council. You know, please come on up for anything on tonight's agenda. Or, you know, anything in the future, you know, please bring your comments forward. We don't need to act on them. We just, you know, listen to comments. And if somebody need to act on a future time or other other business or something, we can certainly bring that up. If you are good, if you are going to address, we can start coming up. If you are going to address the council, there's a three minute time limit. Three minutes. And please give us your name and address and then your time will start after you give us your name and address.
Thank you for central city planning. My first time here, we don't live in the city limits, nothing to do with the city. But the old regulation allowed the city to exercise jurisdiction over.
Well, they didn't say his name.
Didn't say your name. Can we get your name and address?
Amit Takre. I'll spell it out for you. Make it easy. A M I T is in Tom. Last name is T again is in Tom, H A K R E.
Now, go ahead. Sorry about that. I didn't catch that. Oh, your address.
One, four, one, three, seven. Kaufeld Cemetery Row. Yep, thank you. It's Bentonville, by the way. And. So what we have learned or we believe is that the city engineer has willfully. Misled the council into allowing this subdivision. We anticipate ten times more water coming into our property when the subdivision is completed. I'm talking about the Warren subdivision.
That'll be on our agenda later.
Okay, yeah, I don't know, but this is the right time to address. I would hate for you.
The only time this is where the public. Yeah, you're good.
Good.
You're good. This is the time.
So we, to just repeat, we believe the city engineer has. Along with certain elected, appointed, and. Our party city contractors engaged in willfully. Elaborately. Misleading the city council into approving this. Subdivision. And the main concern is that tenfold. In the past, our projections, our calculations show that we used to get three million gallons of water a year. Flowing into our property. Between our house and the barn. We anticipate that to, or we project that to be thirty million gallons of water. And the stadium engineer said that it will not have an impact. We've consulted with officials of the professional engineers. Association. People who will sit in. Judgment over city engineer when the goes, you'll see formally filed against this. But we would consider, we would like you to know a couple of things that. With just the cutting of the roads, we have seen threefold increase in water. Positions are available. We have twelve fallen trees. Ironically, during construction, a tree fell right into the. The pond they were building. The old pond that was there had far more retention capacity. Than the. The pond that has been designed. The pond just gathers water and dumps into our property. In the past, we would get about three or four instances of great water coming to our property from the. The neighboring Mrs. Warren's farm. Now, we, within like twenty minutes of half, quarter inch, half inch rainfall, we get a flood. No, and the flood looks like this. This is a picture. Of our bottle kid, we raise goats. Trying to come to Mawa, she said to be fair, but she couldn't because. You have knee deep water. So this is the kind of impact we're seeing. We, we, and we believe that the mayor. Chairman of the planning commission. And. Certain city third party contractor were made aware of these concerns during court hearing. But nothing has been done to remedy this. So I would all ask is that you. Please come visit us, take a look at this. If you still want to approve it, it's up to you. But I want to present some facts to you, bring in experts, they'll explain to you what is happening to our land. I hope you'll consider you bring the approval from today's agenda.
Yeah, when he gets to that, he'll talk through when it went through planning and things like that and he'll explain, you know.
And I'll bring Alan, our city engineer.
Yeah, so.
I'll bring the city engineer up too. Anyone else?
Thank you.
No, that's fine. You can do it. I can do it later.
And in due courtesy, city of Centerton. Land Commission.
What you hear.
Do you need to sit or are you okay to stand?
Fine.
Are you sure?
I can, you can sit. I can bring microphone to you.
I'm fine.
Okay, all right.
I, my address is one, four, one, three, seven Kaufeld Cemetery Road.
Yep.
Internet.
Thank you.
I did draft an email to send it for the council and I did not. Press send because I didn't know who exactly to send. So I'm, I will send this over once, but I'll read it out to you now. So. To the city of Centerton, we object to the city of Centerton approving any subdivision plans outside the city limits. That's one. We want to reemphasize the existential threat to our farm due to any approval given to Warren subdivision with its current plan. Objection is to the size, depth, and negligible holding capacity of the pond. And the location of the outlet of the pond. Since the work started in nine, twenty twenty four. Right from the first major rainfall in November, twenty twenty four. And subsequent rains in twenty twenty five. The excessive polluted water has been flowing through our farm and continues to flow two to three days after the rain event has ended. Soil remains waterlogged and this has caused several large pecan trees to fall or die just in the spring of twenty twenty five. I can, I mean, I have every event recorded. Due to continuous soil erosion, roots of several more trees are exposed and they too may get polluted soon. The excess water flowing to through our pastures is also compromising the health of our goats. All the drains in the subdivision are sloped to ensure fast flow. Out of the property without any absorption into the soil. Rainwater from the main roads. Goodlet and the Warren Road, there's another two sides of that property. Also frees freely flows through the subdivision drains and this has significantly increased. The quantity of water flowing through our farm and thus harming it. Our concerns about this happening had been brought to the notice of the members of Centerton Planning Commission in my email dated January sixteen, twenty twenty four. I do not believe that the issue has been satisfactorily addressed yet. Proceeding with this final approval of Warren subdivision would mean. That the statement mentioned in point C, that is. Fifteen point zero, one point zero, three of the title subdivision and development regulations of the city of Centerton. Is being deliberately disregarded by the planning commission of like the city council. And will be a grave injustice to our farm perpetrated by the city of Centerton. The. Statement in the thing is about. Causing minimal harm to the neighboring properties. And when, especially when there is, it could have been a solution to this problem.
Have you talked to the property owner before?
I made good faith efforts even before the subdivision. The moment the property was sold, I had. Contacted. Some agent of the property. Who had bought the developers agent, I would say. Because he claimed that I am part of that developers group. And I made good faith efforts. I had texted also, I called also. But no effort was made to, I said, I can come and meet you when you are there to. Tell you about our concerns. But nobody made any contact. And just one, one day suddenly I noticed a hidden. Sign. It was hidden behind a tree and not really visible. Saying that there is a planning meeting and this proposal is going to be.
Can I ask one more question? Is there a reason why you felt like you couldn't reach out to the city prior? Like, were you, like, were you scared to? Like, I mean, is.
We, we did in the planning commission, we did. We did come to that meeting and we had shown our. Problem about our concerns that time also. At that time, they did a minimal increase in the size, but. If somebody were to come and see that pond, it is a joke of a pond. It has no retention capacity. The previous pond used to hold water. It, the water would flow only after, and it would hold enough that it would drain down also. Now it just comes in and goes out.
Yeah, the engineer will come up here when that come.
Yeah, when we get to them.
Is he on here?
Yeah, he's back there. I'll bring him up when we get to that.
There is a solution that could have minimized.
And I would like to add that these parties, if you guys recall, they filed suit against the city of Centerton. We had a trial bill in over the summer sometime.
I, I, I'm, it's all, yeah.
Okay, okay. And, and the court. At that point, I, I, I think the court believed that perhaps there's some finding and flooding issues, but the court made it clear. In his ruling that their relief would be through the property owner, not the municipality.
And then also, I also want to add that when this first, when they came to the planning commission. They spent a lot of time with Alan, getting a bunch of documents and flood reports and everything. And Alan probably emphasized that when he comes up, but they. They provided them, you know, quite a bit of information on this, so. And we'll, we'll talk about that when Alan comes up, so. All right, anyone else? Anyone else? Oh, yeah, it's your turn.
Mike Armstrong, thirty six oh two Northwest Creekstone in Bentonville.
Bentonville. I'm just kidding. What? Just kidding, Pat. Go ahead.
I'm okay, because I'm running for a judge, for a circuit judge, family court judge here in Benton County. I'm running for Judge Francis's spot. He's Division Six. And I'm running because I think that this community, Centerton and Benton County. Need deserve judges who are. Experienced and compassionate and reasonable. And I'd bring that those things to this job. Judge Francis's. Court is mostly family law. That's what he primarily does. And I've been practicing law for twenty years, but the last fifteen or sixteen, I've been doing almost exclusively. Family law. I've helped thousands of clients, families and their kids. And in fact, a lot of people here in Centerton even. Arguably, some of the toughest times of their lives in their family law cases. Before that, I was. A prosecutor here in Benton County. I used to prosecute child sex crimes here for a few years. And all of that experience, those twenty years, taught me that the most important part of this job, of the judge's job, is the kids. Is doing right by them and protecting them. And that's the kind of judge I'd be for this community. Most people don't have to ever be in a courtroom. Most people don't ever have to have a judge involved in their lives, but when they do, it's incredibly personal. And I think the best person for that, the best judge for that is someone who's experienced. Someone who can, knows or has a sense of what a custody case might happen or might turn into a year from now, five years from now, ten years from now. Based on the decision made today. And the only way you get that experience is by doing it. And I've got, like I said, fifteen years of doing just that. And I hope to. That's the kind of judge we need and I hope to be elected to be able to serve this community as that kind of judge. So thank you. I'm going to stick around and I can answer questions for anybody if they've got them or talk to anybody. And I hope to earn your. Trust and your support and your vote. So thank you.
For coming by.
Anybody, anybody else? Anybody? Anybody else? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment. All right, so let's get into ordinances, resolutions. But before we start. Would someone like to make a motion? Read all ordinances and resolutions by title only. Also, to suspend the rule required ordinances to be read on three separate occasions. Will make that motion.
That's them moved.
We got a motion by Wendy and second by Justin. Roll call, sir.
Cliff Thompson.
Yes.
Justin Calgar.
Yes.
Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Jesse Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
And Cody Miles.
Yes.
All right, so our first ordinance is ordinance twenty twenty five dash fifty three. This pertains to the food trucks that we have in the, in the park. We've had these down there now for about seven or eight years. We've been charging just two hundred dollars a month for plus twenty five dollars a month for water. However, you know, looking at our electric bill and everything, we need to bring it up so we can break even on this. There is enough space down there for three trucks hour. We've always limited it to just two. You know, due to limited parking down there and, you know, where these vendors can park. We might bring a third one in on Center today, just that, you know, have a few more choices, but we normally have two. Right now, we just have one. Who's there and. You know, our whole goal was just to have, you know, a little more options. You know, this is before the food truck court opened up over here. You know, we. Had good luck with it. It's had pretty good tenants and we just wanted to raise the fee from two hundred to four hundred dollars a month. And then also raise the monthly fee for water if they require it. Some don't require it. But if they do, it go from twenty five to fifty dollars a month. Any questions?
All right, ordinance number two thousand twenty five dash five, three. An ordinance amended in Centerton Municipal Code, section four point two eight point oh eight, mobile vendors in City Park.
Someone like to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash fifty three.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Whatever you want.
Cody can have it.
I heard somebody down there.
I'm gonna go with Cody.
I'll go. He's closest to you.
He is closest to me.
Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Justin Calgar. Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Jesse Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
And Cody Miles.
Yes.
So next is ordinance twenty twenty five dash fifty five. This is accepted right away in utility easement dedications from the Ramirez family. This property is located on the west side of our city off Wagner Road. Questions on this? Counselor?
In ordinance, or city of Centerton ordinance number two thousand twenty five dash five, five, an ordinance accepting right away in utility easement dedications from Ontario. Antonio and Carolina Ramirez for property located in part of the northeast quarter of the southwest quarter. Of section eighteen township nineteen north, range thirty one west. City of Centerton, Benton County, Arkansas.
Somebody make motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash fifty five.
So moved.
We have a motion. We have a second. Say. Roll call, sir.
Cliff Thompson.
Yes.
Justin Calgar.
Yes.
Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Jesse Reed. Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
And Cody Miles.
Yes.
Next is ordinance twenty twenty five dash fifty six. Accepting a drainage easement from Reach Church due to a lock combination plaque. This is on the east side of the property. This backs up to all the houses on Sunmetal Drive. So this is, this address is back there to dedicate to the city for future drainage project. Any questions on this?
All right, city of Centerton ordinance number two thousand twenty five dash five, six. An ordinance accepting a drainage easement dedicated by Reach Church Pertrack Combination Plat. For property addressed as nine hundred West Centerton Boulevard and located in part of the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter of section thirty two. Township twenty north, range thirty one west. City of Centerton, Benton County, Arkansas.
Only make motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash fifty six.
So moved.
You have a motion. We have a second?
I can.
Roll call, sir.
Luke Thompson.
Yes.
Justin Calgar. Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Jesse Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
And Cody Miles.
Yes.
Next is ordinance twenty twenty five dash fifty seven. This is accepting the final plan of Tuscania Phase Four. Lots one sixty four through two oh five. This is located. At the intersection of Main Street and Towne, where that big rock wall is. This is on the south end of that subdivision. And this was heard by the planning commission on November fourth. And their recommendation was to send it to city council for approval. There was no comments made from the public on this one.
All right, save.
Hold on, is this. Is this right? We're kind of like where that White House is on the corner of Seba and.
The north, behind the rock wall.
Are we gonna run sidewalks around that side too?
There are sidewalks.
I thought they don't connect right there at the corner. Do they? I know they run on Main Street. Do they run?
Yeah, yeah, they go.
I know we were having to look at the trails.
Yeah, you had to go all the way around the south side, all the way down to San Diego.
Trail system's not gonna run through that.
They got sidewalk. I'm not showing the north side. Since it's on the south side. I mean, it's on a future plan, but. Good question. Anything else?
Save Centerton ordinance number two thousand twenty five dash five, seven, an ordinance accepting the final plan of Tuscania Phase Four. Creating resorts to lots one sixty four through two oh five in the city of Centerton, section twenty eight. Township twenty north, range thirty one west, Benton County, Arkansas.
Someone like to make motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash fifty seven.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
The motion and a second. Roll call.
Cliff Thompson.
Yes.
Justin Calgar. Wendy Henson. Jesse Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
And Cody Miles.
Yes.
Next is ordinance twenty twenty five dash fifty eight. This is accepting the final plan of the Warren State subdivision. This was also heard at the November, October twenty first meeting, twenty twenty five. No one, there was no public comments on this. The commission did recommend approval of this, you know, to be sent to the city council. A couple of things, when we started this, this was in our planning area, you know, as it was indicated a little while ago. However, you know, we knew with the new law, it's no longer in our playing area. However, we started the project, so. You know, we're, we're completing, Benton County knows what we're doing here, so. The subdivision is already built out. Ready, ready for homes to be built. So and I'm gonna let Alan come up and talk about, or if you have anything to add about the drainage that they didn't add.
Yeah, I can answer if you have other questions. I know there was concerns brought up originally with this project. They said the flow path for the area, the natural flow path splits between their house and their garage. So when it got to search going through there, would go through that. I know I looked into it in the past. Probably what caused part of it is the road that cuts through their property continues northwest. Goes under. Feld Cemetery Road. I'm trying to get the road name there. It's in the county. It goes underneath that road. The homeowner on the north side of that road built a berm. And actually dams on that water back.
Warren.
No, it's further north from that. It's not going to be shown on the.
Kaufeld.
Fires. There you go.
Fires, right. Yeah, yeah.
I spoke with the county. They sent someone out there to look at it. It's all county property. Now we'd have to have them demo that berm to help drain that property. County hasn't made them do that. I think someone else built where they are in the flow path where the water would go. Under buyer and then phase about northeast and keeps working its way north. And people who built in that property built their home right off the edge of that flow path as well. When we look at these review projects. Big comment is always no negative impacts. A lot of that's looked at is discharge more of that making the natural flow path, not discharging somewhere else. So any kind of water in this area. Continuing between the house and barn, no matter what, that's always been the natural lowest valve where water is going to go. Difference is how they look at a lot is your peak flows. So. If the water was. Three inches deep. It would be no more than three inches deep during the same storm event. Difference is by keeping that with the stored volume, you end up just running for longer. Based on the data from the engineer. He says he meets all those requirements. So from a city standpoint, we have nothing to stop it other than. Here's what his data says. It's on, it's between them and the engineer. If they feel there's a negative impact on their property. To remedy that. There's nothing on our end to stop it through the drainage manual requirements.
What was the berm that you said? I'm looking at buyers.
It's on the north side of buyers, just east of Warren Road.
I mean, I'm looking at it on there. Is it like, if you're looking out of their house towards the rain or whatever?
It's not gonna help for the video, but. The natural flow path. This cuts right through here. So there's a culvert here. This berm, if you go back in time on Google Earth, didn't exist for a while. Berm, there's a culvert where it used to cut across right there.
Our concern isn't the outflow. Our concern is the inflow. And this is what the criminal charges against the city engineers will show that he's deflected. Our primary concern is the water. Our primary concern is the water coming to our house. What he's talking about is going further down. He is never at rest for concern that he's, we went from getting three million gallons of water a year to thirty million gallons of water a year. We use things to deflect, sorry.
So, uh.
How are you, how are you measuring that?
I was gonna say, I just have a question on that and I, it might clear it up, might not. The way it's, it's measured is if it doesn't increase it, like the amount. It, it may increase the amount of time it takes to get through. Is that what you, what I heard you saying?
There's a lot of it is, it's easier when you look at your ditches and flow paths. This one is a wider area. Um, so if it was always throw, flowing three inches deep.
It's gonna still be three inches deep.
It would be three inches deep, but with any kind of development, you have more pavement that the volume goes up, so it's retained back in that pond to maintain that three inch flow. So now, yeah, where it's all surface flow, working its way through that, now it's a ditch flow to the pond. Retain what it would be to maintain the same flow. So, and what they're probably gonna do is the same thing where you look at, um, the way it's set up with Arkansas is it's for all storms, two-year, ten, twenty-five, fifteen-hundred year. And I don't have any, the, their, uh, engineers are important for me to say, here's what it was before, here's what it is now for the total volume runoff. So that's probably they're looking at that total volume runoff or I don't know what storm, but.
Well hypothetically, what would average three-day runoff may take a week to runoff. That's just hypothetically, not saying their property.
Yeah, I mean, those are larger, yeah, so that's kind of what it is. If you had for simple numbers, ten thousand gallons, or the developing now fifty thousand gallons. What took one hour discharge for the ten thousand, still doing that ten thousand an hour, but now it takes five hours.
Yeah, okay.
I answered the question somebody asked about how do I calculate?
I think that's, he kind of, yeah.
Could I come up?
I mean, I think he kind of answered.
That's, that's incorrect. So, but let me explain, uh, and I, I wanted this to be recorded because no matter what, this is going to court, right? So he, he, here's the basic difference between farm and city, right? So there is a, there's research and the, uh, University Park has a professor who will, you know, they'll, they'll, uh, testify to this. Is that in pasture land, up to three inches of water is absorbed by the soil before it even runs off. This is well documented. If you were to Google, uh, Google PageRank, uh, algorithm will tell you what is the most, most relevant, right? So what happens is if you look at three inches, the, the only time we got rainfall in the past was when you had rain prevents three inches or less, three, four times a year, we're fine with that. No concerns. We had, Mrs. Warren was a great neighbor. We had no concern. But now what has happened is you, you covered, um, uh, uh, I, I see the, uh, the utility, uh, this commission is there. They allow one acre lots. Most of what, uh, uh, the construction does is it is going to create, um, the roof, the driveways, they are non-porous, so there's no absorption. So to answer your question, we went from a big, uh, getting about, um, uh, uh, three or four rain, uh, coming through us, uh, to us, uh, property three or four times to getting it just about every rain. And that is, see, this is the big, this is why, uh, why we went to the, uh, Arkansas Board of Professionalism. This is why the criminal, uh, complaint is gonna be lodged. Because the city engineer has refused to accept the fact that he's in letting and he's using the, the berm down the street. Yeah, that, that is the problem.
No, are you saying the city engineer like him?
This is, he, he's, he's, he's one of.
So you're saying I designed this to do this?
Yes, that is what the.
So let's like.
I think that's a miscommunication. I don't think that's what you're saying. I think what you're saying is, uh, yeah, I don't think that's how you're saying it. I think there's a little bit of a, I think what you're saying is the way that's laid out. He didn't, he didn't create the berm.
He approved it. No, so.
The thing, here's the thing, it sounds to me as though from a city, this is my take, from a city's take, we've done what we needed to. And even a judge has already said, you need to take it up with the owner. And, and from what we're being told, this is my take again. It, it sounds like everything is, is the way it's intended to be to make sure your property does not flood. It, it may take a little bit longer.
And I think he's answered, you've answered his question, so I think we need to move on.
Yeah, we, we already had puppy, we, we already had puppy comment.
I just wanted another calculation.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know what the solution was gonna be too.
Anything else for Alan? Alan, you got anything?
No, I looked at it from the three D, you, you're, from three, you can kind of see what you're talking about with the berm.
I'd say before, when it came through, they had concerns about water ponding at that road going through, because you can see where that flow path is even on the aerial where it's different color, but.
I wish we had like a visual just to look at. Is, I mean, is there, let me ask this, is there any liability to city if the engineer followed the process and everything is lined up? We don't have to be in the game on that.
It's not on us. It's on the engineer that designed it and said, made the statement, there's no negative impacts downstream. I'd say from the data provided to us, that's what it says, that there's no negative one. So from a city standpoint, we couldn't, can't hold up, say, hey, the water's been flowing through more often. Is that a negative impact? Very well could be, but there's nowhere else for water to go. That's the natural flow path. So unless you're going to try to pump it upstream or, I mean, from what they said, they already revised it once to obtain more. So what that peak discharge is, but that's all on the engineer. From the data we get to the review, there's nothing we can do to stop that.
And, and I'm sorry, I just, I think this is about the community piece and I, I totally understand what you're saying. I, I do want to ask another question to them, like, who, who owns this property?
Oh, Pinkley does.
We, we own the property there.
I know, I know.
The, the other.
This property belongs to Pinkley Construction.
I mean, uh, hold on, not like a, what, I just want to know, like, what was the solution you had that you were gonna offer? Like, I would just like to know that.
Yes, I can.
What was that, what was that, yeah?
Just. We, as a layman, I could have, uh, I can see that there was a solution to minimize the problem. The water would still flow through our property. But we are part of that college.
There's your property right here.
Yeah, I'll be on, yeah.
So. Hold on, that pond is where in there?
Right.
Right here?
Yeah.
Okay, so the pond's over here, your house is right here, right?
Well, this is.
Yeah, where's your house from here?
Yeah, this is our house.
So Warren Coffin Cemetery is right there.
Yeah.
I just want to see it.
Yeah. Yeah, so. I'm.
I think, I think you're looking at it from here. You can turn it this way.
No, yeah. Uh, the solution was to.
Where's your house at on there?
Oh, we, we are. It's their address.
There's Coffin Cemetery, there's Coffin, there's buyers, there's Warren right here.
This is the house.
So that is your house?
Yeah, this is the home. Right, no, the whole.
Hold on, hold on, I'll look at this. So that's your house, so this is your, this is the way it should look right here.
Yeah, so it.
So it's, you're saying the water from the neighborhood here is gonna drain this way?
Yeah, true. There, the solution was very simple, diverted this way, you know, it still goes, this is our property and what the city.
But you diverted to some else's house.
No. We, we, this is the, 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 the Warren subdivision. We said we'll negotiate with this, we'll pay off, uh, uh, Philip, uh, uh, for, so this is our property.
But what's that property owner say?
Yeah, they, we, we'll, 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 we'll give a grant easement. So they can easily do it. We asked that, the, uh, the, uh, engineer from the, um, he said we don't have to. I mean, the arrogance here is very simple.
Yeah, and so, here, okay, thank you. You can take this.
Yeah.
Here's what I, here's what I would say first of all, I guess. That's not Alan's fault. I would say that, like, that's, this, he's fault, he's following the protocol and doing, like, he, we, we're walking a fine line of their engineer and what you're saying, yeah. Yeah, I just want, just show me that on a map. I, I can't persuade them one way or another, but.
But we, the, the, the whole is that they haven't taken into account the tenfold increase in water that is coming to us because it's not being absorbed by the soil. Right? Because you're putting in roads, you're putting in roofs, you're putting in, and, and that's the, that's the criminal complaint.
Especially if we brought two parties here and said, I think, you know, he's done his diligence of checking with every party.
You can maybe bring the engineer to the next meeting, I wouldn't.
I mean, I, my, first of all, I think he's done everything right, Alan has, so I want to be clear on that, like, no fingers need to be pointed at him, say it's his fault.
But we, we still have.
My suggestion, my suggestion would be i- is if the, if we could table this until the next meeting and, and bring the engineer here and like, I would, I feel like there has been a good faith estimate based on the facts that you've shared, but Alan's buttoned up. I just think I could see where the other party is almost unreachable. And, and I do think it would be fair to have him here, especially if the other property owners, like, yes, you can pay for this, do the over through my property. Like, I feel like there's been basis checked there. I don't know if in good faith I can vote one way or another on that. Must be table and bring him here.
Is that a motion that you want to table?
Oh, I, I mean, I, I would like to make a motion to have him here if, if we're truly trying to have a collaborative conversation. I just, I'd be pissed if it was my property too.
We have a motion, we have a second?
We may not, just.
Table it. Bring the, bring Paul Pinkley here next, or his engineer here next meeting, so he can address the concerns.
There's too much on.
I don't know that that's gonna, I don't know that that's gonna change anything because it's still a dispute between them and the current owner. I mean, there's really nothing the city can do.
Well, and I guess my question is, do we, do we really want to, do we really want somebody that's a property owner? Like, if they were putting their self in his shoes, would they feel that way? Cause like, they're in it to make money and build a subdivision. And this is a property owner that's been there, was worked closely with Mrs. Warren. Also spoke to the adjacent property owners and said, can I run this through your property? Like, I feel like those bases have been checked in a very respectful and neighborly way, whereas people have come in and tried to strong arm us. I don't know. I just, I, I think it was a little aggressive at first, but just my decision. I'm not saying ask a one or other, that's my thought.
He does have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a second to table it. Alright, so, so we'll do a roll call and if you vote yes, you are tabled. If you vote no, you're not tabled.
I do want to be clear that I'm not saying Alan did anything wrong in this. That's not.
Absolutely. He spent, he spent a lot of time.
I just felt, I honestly feel bad, both parts here, I just.
Any more discussion before you take the vote?
Unless there's other context you can add from conversations, no.
I, I'm sorry, do a blank, what's your name again?
Hold on, to make sure I'm clear.
Yes.
We're tabling it so that Pinkley's engineer will come in here. What if they say no? Is it just, we just move on from there?
I think at that point, we as a city don't, we can, but I would, I would hope working with.
I'm just wanting.
I agree.
Yeah, you're gonna bring it back next month.
Bring it back either way, i- if y'all vote to table.
I would think if they're wanting to do the property, they would show up and talk through it.
That's if.
You know more about that world than I do, but I just, that's tough.
We'll get a hold of you if you had to table it.
Cody Miles, you're either voting yes to table.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Wendy Henson?
Yes.
Justin Cowger?
Yes.
And Cliff Thompson?
Well, myself or Kayla or somebody will get a hold of, of Pinkley. I'll, I'll get a hold of whoever the project is assigned to and we'll put on next month.
Is that clear what, what just happened? Basically what's happening is moving it to the next.
Make sure you come to the meeting, it's December, whatever the second Tuesday is.
It's the second Tuesday of the month, same time, but like, we're here. And I think it's like, let's, let's talk about it. Let's not fight back and forth. That doesn't mean I'm leaning one way or another. I think.
December ninth.
Have us here.
December ninth.
So I appreciate you sharing that.
Yeah, thank you, yeah.
I, I do think it has a tough job and so I don't think it's anything on him. It's just, we gotta work through it.
You'll be a lot, a lot more deceptive than the planning commission. And again, that, you'll see it in the criminal complaint about a whole lot of stuff, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alright, next is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fifty-nine. And this is approving the budget. This is just a continuation of our budget meeting. Nothing's really changed except for the two things we added in for planning that y'all asked us to and uh, Lorraine had sent you a very detailed message what we were wanting to do and it's in this budget. No, any questions?
I, I have one question. On the budget, the, the cap?
Uh huh.
We don't have, like, it's, like, for your salary specifically, it says a hundred and thirty is twenty twenty-five, but then the cap is a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So should we not have?
It should, it should.
Say the cap first before we had approved an increase?
No.
I'm new mayor.
I'm talking to.
No, it should say mine's set by, mine's set by ordinance.
Either way, it's set by, we're gonna say.
Set by ordinance.
Yeah. So it, it kind of counts it or?
But do we not adjust the cap? I guess is my question.
I mean, the minute, no, because we have a minimum.
You don't put one on, I mean, mine's all set by.
A cap would mean you put a ceiling on it. You don't need a cap, you need a minimum, you have that.
It, it shouldn't say on there by ordinance. It's the first one. It's right there, you had it. It's right there by, it's set by ordinance.
Yeah, so when you say cap, what do you mean? Like, if you look at this as well. Yeah, what are you trying to say?
That, where it's a salary cap here, should we not have changed that?
To what?
Well, obviously one twenty-five, he makes more than one twenty-five.
Yeah, but the cap, the cap is, like, that's the minimum.
Actually, we probably should just take that out, because we did make a comment, it's set by ordinance.
Yeah.
So there is no really cap.
I think honestly that should be rewarded anyway. It's more a minimum.
That's, that was my question.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a cap, I'm thinking of.
Take, when, when we, when we do, then we could take that one thirty-five out and it, and we can just change it, because it is set by ordinance. Alright, cool. Anything else? That's a good question though. We, I didn't even catch that. Anything else?
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash five-nine, an ordinance approving and adopting a budget for the operation of the city of Centerton, Arkansas for the calendar year two thousand twenty-six.
Someone like make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fifty-nine.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
I can.
Okay, and before you vote, I just want to say, you know, it will automatically increase my salary. I know there's, anyway, I don't need, we have to come back next month with an ordinance to change mine and tons. And that, that's set by ordinance. I can't just, it, it's not on them. For, for us, so just so you know that. Alright.
Alright, Cliff Thompson?
Yes.
Justin Cowger? Wendy Henson?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Joshua Hagan?
Yes.
And Cody Miles?
Yes.
Alright, next is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash sixty. Uh, we also spoke about this in the budget meeting and this is just, uh, according to an agreement with, uh, Acton, I drew a blank for, for our body cameras and tasers accessories. We already have a contract with them. It's about to expire, so uh, this is just a new, uh, five-year contract. Uh, Cody, you want to add anything to this? Do you think I covered it?
What we covered in the budget work session, uh, this is just a contract that we had already spoken about to present to you.
Alright, any questions?
Thank you.
Counselor.
And this will be pursuant to, to my approval.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. One thing I forgot to add is the reason why we are waiving the bidding is, uh, is this, our, there, there's only one carrier that does this, but this is who we're already currently using too. So it's more cost effective to stay there, since we already have their equipment in there. So anyway, go ahead, sorry.
Well, aren't we getting, aren't we also getting like the expanded, uh, cloud service anyway?
Yes. Yep, I think he said that. He's coming to tell you that.
No, you're all good. I just thought, I thought you missed.
I'll, I'll stay here and make sure he goes on.
Steps in, I know. Oh, you're good.
Hey, he ain't got no steps. I got the steps.
I mean, I, I remember you saying you're pretty excited about this in the budget session.
Yes, this has some, um, included expanded software and things. Uh, the cloud storage is just what we already have. Um, we have unlimited cloud storage. It was the, the software aspect on which you're, uh, asking about.
Alright.
Intention upon my uh, proof of the contract. Ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash six zero, an ordinance waiving bidding requirements for the purchase of body cameras, tasers and accessories for the sergeant police department.
Someone like to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash sixty contingent on Brian's review. Make a motion.
Right.
Motion and a second, roll call, sir.
Cliff Thompson?
Yes.
Justin Cowger?
Yes.
Wendy Henson?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Joshua Hagan?
Yes.
And Cody Miles?
Yes.
Alright, next.
Thank you.
Next is resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight, uh, this is a resolution, so I've applied for a grant for the old city hall building. Uh, we, we did earmark two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this project, actually three hundred and fifty, you know, with the engineer and all that. Uh, and I have applied for a grant, a matching grant of two hundred and fifty thousand. And we don't a hundred percent have it, but it's looking very good, they want me to write a resolution making a commitment that we would match the other two fifty, so. That's all it is, so. We have five hundred thousand instead of two fifty.
I mean, do you just knock it down with that kind of money?
No, we're not gonna knock it down. We're not knocking it down. And we build up, we got in a flood zone, anyway, we're not knocking it down, so.
Get to spend that on a certain area of that building? Keep running property like a parking lot?
This is just maybe for the, we don't really have a parking lot there except in the back.
Yeah, I know, that's what's scary.
Yeah, I mean, we could probably repay that at some point. If we have any funds left, we will, but we haven't got the bid yet, so.
I'd help with firing it.
If you build it.
Yeah.
Then you built the parking lot.
They need one, oh, I, I need to take the food vendors out of there, I'm sorry, I'm gonna need one or the other.
We'll work on it. Oh, wait, 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 any more questions? Sorry, I mean, I didn't want to cut anybody off. Questions, questions, questions?
Do you mind repeating the total for that project?
Uh huh.
The total amount used for that project?
Uh, yeah, so I have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars earmarked by the city. And I'm applying for an additional two hundred and fifty thousand for a total of five hundred thousand. Good question.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-five dash three eight, a resolution applying for a matching grant. Through model a building owned by the state of Centerton for the purpose of a library and gathering place.
Someone like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight.
I'm letting.
Have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Cliff Thompson?
Yes.
Justin Cowger?
Yes.
Wendy Henson? Josie Reed?
Yes.
Joshua Hagan?
Yes.
And Cody Miles?
Yes.
And I'll keep you updated, as I usually do, by email of the progress if we get this. Cause I'm kinda excited, they seem very interested in this project. Alright, so these next three, I'll just kind of give an overview of all three of them. Uh, this is uh, purchasing equipment, uh, which we talked about in the budget meeting too, uh, we want to go ahead and purchase it, we won't get this till next year. Uh, but we want to go ahead and order it, uh, the first resolution is uh, you purchase a compact excavator. The second one forty is a John, is a backhoe. And then third one is uh, the motor grader, and I'll let Anthony come up in uh.
Huh, I'm about to start my own company and picking up their vehicles.
You got anything to add? Did I miss anything?
No, these are, we're just replacing what we currently have, the leases are up. And we're going to purchase this equipment as requested from you guys in the past. So that's all this is, is we're just replacing the equipment we're about to lose. With the same exact equipment, just upgrading and then purchasing.
Any questions? Alright, so the first one is uh, for the excavator, wait, 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 yeah, this for excavator, okay.
Alright, order, resolution number two thousand twenty-five dash thirty-nine. A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk as representatives of the city of Centerton, Arkansas. To enter into an equipment purchase agreement with Stribling Equipment Company LLC, Springdale, Arkansas. For the purchase of a John Deere fifty P tier compact excavator and attachments.
So it takes that long.
Someone like to make a motion to adopt the resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-nine.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Right.
Roll call.
Cliff Thompson?
Yes.
Justin Cowger?
Yes.
Wendy Henson?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Joshua Hagan?
Yes.
Cody Miles?
Yes.
Next one's twenty, is resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty, uh, this is a same company, this is an agreement for a purchase of a backhoe. Any questions on this?
The other ones will just go to auction.
No, they go back to the release of notes.
What we're replacing goes back to them, that's why we're not, we don't do that stuff anymore.
You think we're making the right decision with that leasing, just asking?
Say that one more time?
We're making the right decision not leasing on that?
Believe so.
Okay.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-five dash four zero. A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk as representatives of the city of Centerton, Arkansas. To enter into an equipment purchase agreement with Stribling Equipment Company LLC, Springdale, Arkansas. Of a John Deere three twenty P tier backhoe.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourth.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Roll call, sir.
Cliff Thompson?
Yes.
Justin Cowger? Wendy Henson?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yeah.
Hagan?
Yes.
And Cody Miles?
Yes.
Alright, the last one is resolution, well, for Anthony, is a resolution, well, he has one more, uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-one. Uh, this is the same thing, we're purchasing the road grader with resolution. Wait, wait, any questions? Now you go ahead.
Uh, resolution number two thousand twenty-five dash four one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk as representatives of the city of Centerton, Arkansas. To enter into an equipment purchase agreement with Stribling Equipment Company LLC, Springdale, Arkansas, for the purchase of a John Deere six seventy-two P tier. Motor grader with six-wheel drive.
Six-wheel drive?
Someone like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-one.
I'm letting.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call, sir.
Cliff Thompson?
Yes.
Justin Cowger?
Yes.
Wendy Henson?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Joshua Hagan?
Yes.
And Cody Miles?
Yes.
Where's the sixth?
Alright, uh, next, stay up here, next, next one is resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-two. Uh, this is a lease agreement with John Carter, who owns quite a bit of property over here on Commercial Street. And he has a building uh, that we can lease, it's next to the daycare here on Commercial, it's north of the Dollar General. Little building there, cause when they get ready to remodel their building, uh, they're gonna need a place for temporary offices, so uh. So I reached out to John, since I knew he had some property, he said he, he released that to us for twenty-five hundred dollars a month, all utilities paid.
And we gotta do that, um, to save money, we do it in one phase instead of two. So we have to be out of the building. So they're doing everything all at once instead of phase one, phase two.
We probably need it three or four months.
No, it'd be more like ten.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
You want like ten months?
Ten months.
We have a four-month lead.
Can.
If everything goes right.
Can I throw this out there, so it'd be, so it'd be twenty-five thousand?
Twenty-five hundred?
Not.
Oh, twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand.
Is it, I'm not trying to do this to you guys, but I'm asking.
I'm used to it.
Do we repurpose pushing off city, the old city hall for now and let them office out of there, can they not do that?
I I don't think so, I think we want to start construction on that in in, you know, January, February. And if he's gonna be there ten months, we're gonna hold that project up and I I I don't get, if I get to grant, I have a certain amount of time.
We already.
Yeah, that's not bad.
I'm sorry.
We already don't thought about that, we already thought about that, but it would. City Hall for.
I mean, sorry, I had to ask, I know you're like, do that, but.
Well, no, no, I mean, cause he gonna be there ten months and then we're gonna, like I said, vote, not get that done.
That was originally our idea, wasn't it? But since we would block it for the whole year, it wasn't feasible.
Go and get you an ice skating rink and run out to the public too while we're at it.
That's a good question, though, any more questions? You ready down there? Okay, your counselor.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-five dash four two, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk. As representatives of the city of Centerton, Arkansas, to enter into a lease agreement with Jonathan Carter. For temporary office space located to two two one Commercial Street, Centerton, Arkansas, for the city of Centerton.
Someone like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-two.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second? Is that your second?
Uh huh, second.
Second, yeah, I got it. You got it? Roll call.
Cliff Thompson?
Yes.
Justin Cowger?
Yes.
Wendy Henson?
Yes.
Josie Reed? Joshua Hagan?
Just looking at the contract, I said we can extend it, now you asked questions already, but. Why don't we not just go ahead and put ten months on there? Why do we have four?
I could have it modified if you like.
I was gonna ask why it takes ten months to read his buildings, like one way or another, like.
Well, I would, if it's gonna be ten months, I, could you come back and renegotiate after your?
That's originally my fault, I told the mayor four months initially, um, but then the bid came back and they put ten months, so.
We're gonna take ten months to read it?
And John, and John told me, I could have it, but he, he told me we, as long as we needed, he had nobody else for it.
Yeah, asylum, that was the fastest, one of the bids was a year and a half.
Can we just leave it at four and do a month to month after that?
The whole thing is a month, yeah, the whole thing is month to month and stuff. Alright, let's leave it.
It's not how the contracts, I don't think, is it? Does it say we can do month to month at the same price in here?
I'm going back to just see if I can uh.
Contract says four, so.
I haven't seen a month to month in here, but.
Monthly basis and such tendencies shall be terminated upon forty-five days written notice served by either party.
I would, yeah, if we could say a month to month and ask for forty-five day notice, I mean, that would be great.
Well, that's how it's written.
It does say, yeah, uh, the, the last sentence of paragraph one term. If a tenant remains in possession of the premises with the consent of landlord after the natural expiration, this agreement. Will automatically renew on a monthly basis, and such tendencies shall be terminated upon forty-five days written notice.
And he, and he told me he had nobody else lined up for it, so he can have as long as he wants.
Okay. Comfortable with that, Brad? Was it, are you comfortable with that?
I mean, uh, I mean.
He had me make one change to it and you did, so.
I didn't request one change, it's, it's one of these, again, it says if both parties are in agreement, so who knows what, I mean. That means if he does not agree, then, you know, he can.
He's in agreement if we go up.
He he can evict us and, you know, arguably, he could, he could raise the rent.
That's what I'm on. That's, that's more what I was thinking. I would be more comfortable with just going in and put months on there.
I could have do that. He'll do it.
We're for sure it's gonna take ten months.
It's gonna nine.
That's what I'm wondering, if it gets done in the last half.
I'll, I'll contact him, just tell him put eight to ten months. Or not to exceed ten months or something, I don't know, whatever.
Give a better idea if it's down the road, what if?
Well, what I'd probably do, i- if if you guys are okay with approving and allowing us to negotiate a little bit.
I won't.
Indicate that, well, we. We could probably put some language in there that he will reserve it for us for up to ten months, however, you know, we, we would have the right to terminate. Early with with so much notice, if you guys are okay with that.
We're, we're fine with construction, so it could be sooner, it could be later. Whether other things happen, uh, foreseen things, construction's unpredictable, so it could be a year.
So we have to play that game long and be prepared for it.
So, but the issue is, is I have to start moving by the time next council meeting, so.
I'm, I'm.
Going y'all tonight.
Go with that, do we need to?
Well, I mean, I, I, I think we, your vote is to, to approve subject to modification that uh.
So wait, we need to take the motion and withdraw it and then do a new motion?
I'm, I.
You have a motion just to approve it as it's.
We had a motion to, to adopt, we did not make it through all of the votes yet.
Do we have a motion in a second?
We have a motion.
This and we probably. No, and then.
Well, no, this was, they already voted, though. Half of them already voted.
Everybody, yes.
Right.
They all voted yes.
So we need to withdraw the vote.
Yeah, that's.
Just, we just want to withdraw the motion and start over?
Sure.
So whoever made the second, you want to withdraw it?
It's me.
You, you want to withdraw it?
Drawing my motion second, sorry.
And who made the motion?
I got Wendy is the motion, Justin is.
Just kidding, he was second, I made the motion.
Both want to withdraw?
I'm drawing.
Alright, so now we need new motion, and new motion will say, Brian, it will say, it allows.
New motion will, will allow uh, the, the city attorney and government uh, employees. To attempt to negotiate uh, a lease that would be more beneficial to us based on the amount of time that uh, we foresee we believe that we will need. The premises.
For all that.
He'll get it, he'll type it out.
Got it.
So we have a motion, someone like to make that motion?
I'll make it.
Alright, Josh made it, we got a second?
Second.
Second by Josie, alright, now we'll do a roll call.
That's, that's my. Cliff Thompson?
Yes.
Justin Cowger?
Yes.
Wendy Henson?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Joshua Hagan?
Yes.
And Cody Miles?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Alright, next is resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-four, this is why Kayla's here, uh. Now, so this is just a request, uh, you know, we went into contract with uh, BSNA for software, it's coming along real good. Uh, but this is just a change request to a dish fund, a request funding if needed. Uh, Lorraine stressed that if we need it, we might not need this, but.
Skip one.
Skip three. Three, forty-three.
Oh, sorry, I did skip it, oh, we can go to forty-four and back to forty-three, no, we'll go to forty-three, I did skip it. Alright.
That's not sewer rates.
Yeah, let's go back to.
When did you get the sewer rate? Yeah, that's going on.
Alright, so resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-three is only set in the public hearing. Uh, for a possible base rate increase of our sewer rate of fifty cents per, this base rate of fifty cents. Uh, when we go over the uh, the rate study they provided, I, I will let you know what, what is proposed, I think I already emailed it to you, but. I'll just kind of go over it for the public too, but this is always set in the public hearing, cause it is changing the sewer rate. Uh, just to add fifty cents to the base rate, uh, they are not at this time proposing rates and anything else on the sewer rate. Uh, until we see what happens with the caterer. So, I mean, I'm sure that'll come back next year at some point, but for now, that's, is that what I understand, uh, Don and Bob? Fifty cents is all you said, right?
Yeah.
For this, so. Alright, so we're just setting a public hearing and, you know, and then we'll. December ninth. December ninth. December ninth, six P M. And give us a chance to get the word out for the public and attentive, like, alright. Any questions?
That'd be a great meeting to come. Pencil me in.
Counselor.
City of Centerton, resolution number two thousand twenty-five dash four three, a resolution stating a public hearing to discuss sewer rate increase, city of Centerton, Benton County, Arkansas.
Someone like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-three.
We'll move.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Right.
Okay, roll call, sir.
Cliff Thompson?
Yes.
Justin Cowger? Wendy Henson?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Joshua Hagan?
Yes.
Cody Miles.
Yes.
Alright, now we'll go to Resolution twenty twenty-five. Here we go. So, this is just a request, uh, and we have a credit, we already have a credit with BSNA, so. It won't affect our budget at all, but this is just requesting for additional days of training if needed. Uh, Lorraine was very adamant that if we need them, great, if we don't need them, we won't use them, we just wanted to have it there for that reason. So, any questions?
City of Centerton Resolution number two thousand twenty-five dash four-four, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute on behalf of the City of Centerton. A change request to add four days remote training and setup to the agreements with BSNA Software for the building, safety, planning. And administrating departments for the City of Centerton, Arkansas.
So only make motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-four.
I moved.
A motion, and a second. Roll call.
Cliff Thompson.
Yes.
Dustin Cowgar.
Yes.
Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Jose Reed.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Cody Miles.
Yes.
Alright, so we're done with those, so next is first, and we'll just do this all in one. This is acknowledged and received, the water is still with the budget. Uh, this was then at the last meeting, but. They have approved, but also there's a rate study in here, and I already sent this to you in email, but I just wanted to kind of state what, what the plan is. This one here is for water, and what their plan is, is, uh. Down here in the middle and bottom, you see that fifty cent base bill, they're each in twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And the dollar, a thousand gallon usage increase, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Uh, they do. On the January first of every year, when it's effective, they approve. Uh, also, as the last meeting, they'll be bringing an ordinance to you. Uh, you actually raised the water rate a dollar forty-five. Because there's also a thirty-five cent, uh, charge from the provider. Instead was not included in here, but this is also based on some future bonds they might get, and then, uh. They put ten cents on top of the thirty-five cents, and then on the sewer rate. Again, uh, this is what we'll have the public hearing on initially is the fifty cent base bill increase from twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And also they want to raise a dollar ten. Uh, per thousand gallons in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, nothing in twenty-six. According to this rate study they gave us here, uh, I know we're, we're going to talk through Decatur, and I think Bob will, will say something on there. But I just wanted to show what they're proposing, uh, they will bring an ordinance, uh, for the water rate increase too. At our next meeting, we're not going to bring it this time, but then, uh, Malcolm said we'll just bring it here at this next meeting with this. Do it all at once, and, uh, I think billing wise, it's still, if it's approved, it all works out, you know, as far as their billing cycle, so. With that, first, does someone like to make a move, or ask any questions on this first, and then we'll let them give an update. Any questions on what I? Huh? Hang on a minute, so. This acknowledged receipt of, just kidding it. I'll make a motion to acknowledge receipt of the. Our budget and the water rate, and water and sewer rate studies.
Moved.
Motion, we got a second?
Second.
All in favor? You want to oppose? Alright, next is the water and sewer update, and, uh, I'll turn this over to Andrew Anderson.
The commission met on fourth of November, and we took several actions, uh, that we were going to report. Um, one of the issues, uh, audio recordings and meetings. On a voice point, the commission has agreed to continue research to improve microphones. While continuing to use two separate recording devices. Commission is also informed that we are currently in compliance with the law pertaining to posting amendments online. And making available audio recordings on request. That's our position. Staff, uh, the, the commission approved staff recommendations to increase the fees for. New three-quarter inch meter to three hundred and fifty dollars, and for one inch meter to seven hundred dollars. This increase in fee will reflect the current market cost for meters. We adopted the budget for twenty twenty-six. Significant items in this budget include a continuation of the contract for replacement of service lines as part of water loss mitigation. Continuation of contract for sewer flow monitoring and development of dynamic sewer flow model. It also includes the use of unrestricted reserve funds to cover the non-reimbursable cost. Of relocating water and sewer lines associated with Centerton Boulevard, that's how we want to widening project. It also upsets work to use unrestricted reserve funds to pay for a project to correct such, uh, sewer pencil. We will be replacing two vehicles. We'll be adding two employees, one administrative and one operator. And we've been increasing employee compensation by two point eight percent. That's the budget, that's the significant items in the budget. We received and accepted water rate study, water and sewer rate studies. With. Some exceptions. For twenty twenty-six, the base of water rate, it will be proposed to increase fifty cents. We will increase the flow rate to one dollar and forty-five cents. The one dollar, and that has two components. The flow rate. Thirty-five cents. Per thousand. With the wholesale charge, the increase, and the dollar and ten cents to cover. Uh, so playing increases in cost. Dollar and ten cents was recommended by the. One dollar was recommended by the rate study. So we, we accepted that. Thirty-five cents plus another ten, ten cents. A dollar forty-five for the flow rate. And for the base sewer rate to increase fifty cents. A rate study for Decatur has not been completed at this time. It is possible that a further rate, a further sewer rate increase may be recommended. A few comments about the rate study. The rate study calculations must comply with the terms of Act six oh five of two thousand twenty-one. The act requires that rates must include debt service cost or planned projects. This is different from prior years when rates were adjusted at the time, we incurred that we were taking out the debt. For projects. Our rates, you know, the rate study projects what those costs are being, they, they're built into the rates. Okay. The act also requires that five percent of operating revenues for water and sewer must be set aside for water and sewer repairs. What we do is we do a bookkeeping entry, we take five percent of the monthly revenue, shove it into the account. And then we expense out the repairs. The act requires that one hundred percent of depreciation must be recovered in the rates. This requirement for recovering one hundred percent of depreciation in the rates. Results in a debt service coverage ratio that is significantly different from how the financing agencies. Calculate debt service coverage ratios. The act requires that rate studies must occur at least every five years. Due to the dynamic growth experience of Centerton Utilities, the commission anticipates that we will have a new rate study. Twenty twenty-six. Again, and it will project out for five years. At this time, ordinance is being prepared for your action at your December meeting, will update the schedule of fees and the water and sewer rates to be effective. First to January twenty twenty-six. In terms of other activity of the commission. Creation of a multi-municipality sewer treatment organization. Decatur has begun steps to initiate a study for organizing a new multi-municipality organization to own and operate. The sewer treatment works located in Decatur. The existing Centerton and Decatur contract envisioned this. Action and contains provisions pertaining to such. The commission intends to fully participate in the working to develop this new organization. The commission will keep the mayor and the council informed as, as the work proceeds, as it fully supports. As the commission fully supports the Senator in a member of this new organization. This new organization needs to be formed urgently. To allow planning for the expansion of the Decatur Sewer Treatment Works to proceed. So that the growth of our cities is not limited again. It also appears that a larger. Multi-county regional organization for sewer treatment will possibly emerge. From the study sponsored by the State of Arkansas and the Northwest Arkansas Council. The commission fully supports the study and will participate in its formation. If and when the re- regional organization emerges. From that study, the commission will encourage the city to be a member of that organization. Now.
Didn't you just say the same thing twice, just in a different? You're saying Decatur is.
We're going at that, and there's also another one that could be stood up? Yep, the state. As part of the state water plan, the state and Northwest Arkansas Council have put the money together, and they are have a study ongoing. Looking at the. Washington Benton region.
Is it one choice on that? Want to be a part of that?
Right.
No, that's, I guess that's what I'm saying, is like, so we don't need to sign agreements too soon on either, if, if we're thinking.
Okay, alright, alright. That study will not be completed until sometime next summer. And who knows how long it'll take to get that, that new, if they come back and say, yeah, we need this larger organization. It'll take several more months.
Few more years to fund it.
But Centerton, Decatur is already initiated getting a multi-city. Organization. And we are in support of that, and we're in support of that because, folks, even with all of the improvements that are being made. Over there at Decatur. And the new permit. That I understand is being issued. We need to be built, getting, we, we need to get work started on building an additional treatment capacity. The only way that that will occur is for, if this new organi- a new multi-city organization to come about. So that they can take on the debt. Along with the operations.
Sounds exciting.
The city of Decatur.
Yeah.
If you want to know, city of Decatur is tapped out in terms of their financial capacity.
One hundred percent. It's a one-trick pony running ninety-eight percent of the.
Alright, anyway, that's where we're at. So that's why there's two, you know, so we're talking about creating a new organization between the, the three, you know, two, three, four cities. And then there may be a regional. Multi-county. With many cities and two counties in it. We don't know what's going to come out of that study. I mean, I, I don't even want to talk about some of the things that.
Keep us updated, I guess.
Right. Because, but I will tell you this. Whatever comes out of that regional study. Is going to hit everybody in the pocketbook. Anytime. It's going to cost, I mean, it's, it covers not only water, it covers wastewater. And it, whatever comes out of that study, it's going to be, it's going to cost everybody a lot of money.
Where would something like that go?
What?
Something like that fit.
Where does what fit?
Where would like, with a?
I have no idea. Uh, the, the lead engineer on, in, on the study was at our meeting. And they're. You know, they're working on, he's gathering the data, and they're starting to look at it. He mentioned to private some things that he thinks may come out of it, and not willing to even talk about them in public. I mean, just take, it don't cost money. I mean, I've been, I did water for a long time. Doing consulting, whoops. Even back in eighty. Yeah. I was telling you. It cost more to treat wastewater than it did to treat the water. We're just going to get that way.
I just want to make a comment on the recording part, because I know that we've talked about this a lot. I just want to make clear that while it may be like what we legally are required to do. The planning commission, the council are all video for transparency purposes. That was my position, I wasn't able to bring it up at your budget meeting, but my position and from residents. Especially with everything going on with the water and sewer. That. Even though that we do the minimum that's required by the law, you're not going to say that we shouldn't go above that. For the transparency purposes, I understand that's your position, I just wanted to, to give you my, my position on that, so.
And I think, um. I don't know if the attorneys alluded to the fact that there's some, some security reasons probably behind why.
But I, I will say Malcolm did mention that the council, that he would be happy to send the recordings to the council, so that's good. It's just hard when you're having to fill ya, you know, I mean, so I, I can understand that to an extent, but that was my position on that, so I just want to make that.
Alright, I have one more item. On Thursday, November the sixth. We had a bid opening for the relocation of water and sewer lines along Centerton Boulevard. Main Street to Highway. Bids received were less than the projected cost. It's our under review. And the contract will be awarded by the commission at its meeting on November the eighteenth. Bids are being audited at this point. But they did come in less. What it means is that we may have to borrow, it will just label us to borrow less money instead of more money.
Any other? I, I got something for you, Bob, and this is just something to think about for the future. I did send you an article over the weekend, and the commission and also the council. The neighboring cities to the south has a senior rate for low usage users.
It has been proposed by a council person. To the Springdale Water and Sewer Commission, that they give a discounted rate to senior citizens.
Okay, and I just wanted to say, I don't think it makes that much of an impact on the overall budget, because only about nine percent of our population is senior. You know, we, you know, for, there's a thought. I put in your burner. Something to put on your plate.
We are, we are collecting data.
Okay.
And we will be looking at it, think about it. And, uh. But yes, okay.
Next thing, can we get an update on leaks?
Right now, they're, they're making a permit.
It's been several months since we talked about leaks, where are we at on?
Actually making improvements.
We're actually improving a little bit. And, uh, and we are extending the contract.
Good.
All improved. And, uh, next year.
You know, they're working in Sienna, because they say, bear, bear, they're turning up our grass, okay, thanks.
Now, they, we moved to Sienna because we have a number of large leak. Significant fault.
I think I actually said it in our last meeting, I've been looking at reports that I sent you, they got the leak, and it is going down.
I didn't, I didn't bring it with me, but.
No, it's going down, and everything Malcolm sends, I send to them, so. I, I, they get all the same reports that you get. I, we're very sharing. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Next is a, a couple of. Proposal, uh, policy proposals, Josh is here if you have any questions, uh, I think what I emailed is out, it was pretty self-explanatory, but. Anybody have any questions on the, on them? Hey, someone like to make most adopt the two policies, performance evaluation and cola and comp time in lieu of.
Make a motion.
Got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Alright. Under other business, a couple of things, I did put a letter in here that I did write to R-Dot. I've not heard back, I will, uh, follow back up with them in a couple of weeks. Trying to still get Main Street, one, Highway one oh two B, just programmed into their system. We can get it programmed, then we can work around, they got a new director, and, uh, I wrote him and just tried to, try to get something done with that. Uh, you know, sooner than later, because it's not getting any better. You know, and, uh, they've been very responsive, though, I mean, as far as potholes and things, they, they come right out, so. Also, they've made some improvements up on, uh, Highway seventy-two this the other day, uh, based on some messages we sent, so. A good deal. The other thing I have under other business is I talked to you last month, uh, about Allen Road, trying to get some easements, uh, for some property. And we have two, Anthony's and this, Anthony and I are discussing with another property owner and another one I'm talking to, but we got three, we, we can't get any contact with. I got one that's out of state, and, you know, I actually got the letter back. Another guy, he talked to me one time on the phone, said, yeah, I'll get back with you, never got back, I've sent him certified letters and things, so. And then the other one, uh. We're, we're not getting any response from that one either, so, uh, I'd like to go ahead and move, move forward with the condemnation of these three, you know. Three or four properties, it could be a fourth one, uh, I do have funds available for the grant. Uh, Brian can handle all the condemnation, we've done this before for water and sewer, and also, uh. Uh, traffic light, we put in everything, uh, I've already had everything appraised, the. Two of these minutes are worth like four thousand dollars in each, the other one's worth about, oh, close to eight thousand. Legal fees, we, we can cover all, I've talked to the person who made you the grant, we can cover all those fees in there, so.
It's just changing it from a utility to a recreation.
Change to a multi-use easement, yes. And, 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 you know, like I explained to them, these, these are not close to your backyard, there's, it's like twenty-five foot, and it's like at least ten to twelve foot from each one of them. And one that Anthony's working with, we're just having to work an access easy for him, but we're going to get that, and we're going to, and I'm going to continue working with these guys. But at some point, I'm going to need to proceed on, I want to get the okay to go ahead and proceed on with it. And like I said, Brian will, will do all the, all the labor work, he's done it for us before. Any questions? I'll make a motion for me to proceed on with the, uh, connotations for the trail. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Do you want a roll call on that?
Uh, do, do one roll call?
Just asking.
We can, what, you, what do you think?
Uh, I didn't hear any mays.
Okay.
Okay. I don't buy it, if that's what you want. Okay, um, does anybody else have any other business? So we do need to go to executive session, before I do though, because some of you will probably leave. I just want to announce a couple of events, this is for you, uh, I do have coffee with the mayor this Saturday, November fifteenth. Nine A M, I hold it over at our old city hall building, you know, if y'all want to come, Parker, if you want to join us, uh. We meet at the old city hall at nine o'clock in the morning, you know, on the third Saturday, this will be the last one of the year, I don't hold one in December. So come on out, socialize with your neighbors, sometimes people running for office show up, some of our nonprofits, our businesses show up, our utilities commission always gives an update. So, uh, it's a good time, and, uh, you know, come on out. Also, uh, we are hosting a community Thanksgiving dinner. On November twenty-seventh, which is Thanksgiving Day, eleven A M to one P M, I still am looking for. You know, I've got a signup genius out there, uh, we got the hams, the turkeys, but we're still looking for side dishes. You know, and I'll, it, it's a free dinner, everyone's welcome. Requirements, I usually had about a hundred, a hundred and twenty people, I think we did last year, and we, I don't know if you can, you didn't come to there, but she helped us carve turkeys. There'll be some volunteer active events too, so, somebody wants to help carve turkeys or serve or stuff, I'll get that signup genius out this week too, so. That's all the announcements I had.
Can I make one real quick?
Yeah, sure.
Since the government shut down, a, a lot of you know that I'm involved with Centerton Cares, and we have seen and. Just an amazing amount of support in the community, um, the. just an amazing amount of support in the community, the neighborhood market, pantries just overloaded with stuff. My front porch is overloaded with stuff. So just just for the sake of of those who may not know, we have a very giving and loving community. So I just wanted you guys to know that they're taking care of your people. Community is taking care of each other, so.
Okay, so with that, since I hear no other business, something I'd like to adjourn into the executive session.
Then moved.
You have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right. State of reasons.
Second.
Yeah, the reasons we have a personnel issue to discuss. Let me redo the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, I'm going to pause the recording.
Somebody.
Ready?
As well. All right, you ready? Are we ready, everybody? All right, someone like to make motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Anyone oppose? All right, so we did meet the executive session. We did have a city employee who was on the clock working also a second job, being compensated by both. And as a further investigation, that employee was terminated for that. He was also using city equipment. And we, it was figured by the by the department head that the monetary amount of that was one thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-three cents. The employee has agreed to pay that back to the city out of his final check.
Not again, I'm sorry, Bill.
Oh, sure. One thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-three cents.
Thank you.
The employee has agreed to pay that back out of his final check. I think I got it all. So would someone like to make a motion to accept that agreement?
So moved. I can't.
Motion and a second. Now let's do a roll call.
Cliff Thompson.
Yes.
Dustin Cowgar. Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
And Cody Miles.
Yes.
Okay, someone like to make a motion to adjourn.
We moved.
Who wants to?
I.
Thanks.
Let me stop there for you.